Yes, Chairman, it has. Yes, Mr. Candell.
Here.
Mr. Allegra.
Here.
Mr. Bolton. Mr. Elmeyer. Ms. Larmen. Mr. Mueller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Voluson. Councilman Zabrowski. Chairman Ty.
Here.
We have a quorum.
So, Mr. Mueller, we need to have minutes that needs an exception of the minutes from the 17th, 2024 meeting.
Motion, Chair.
I have a second. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Great.
Case in the agenda.
None this evening?
And the site, site plan subdivision hearing draft. Unit facilities. And land use element of the master plan dated 22/24.
Ah, now it's on. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Ah, let's see. Am I good to share my screen, Beth? No, I think you have to give me permission to share my screen. Oh, here we go. There we go. Thank you. Get this up. All right. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is McKinley Mertz. I'm with Higher Gruen and Associates. My colleague sitting behind me is Hannah Davenport. And we, along with a few other professionals in our office, prepared the three master plan elements that are before you tonight. As the chairman indicated, we have the, the land use element, the community, community facilities element, and the circulation element. So tonight, I'm going to walk you through a very broad overview of what's in all of these plans. I'm happy to go into any more detail if there are specific questions. But I, what we are doing tonight is really just a discussion for me to answer any of your questions and review what we have proposed in these plans. The formal adoption hearing will be later in October. We had originally planned to present this to you tonight for adoption, but Hannah, through working with your master plan subcommittee, we heard from Sarah, the Saraville Redevelopment Agency, that they would like to participate in this process a little more than they have. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, they wrote you a letter. Is that correct?
Yes, they did.
Great. So that letter asked if this board would be willing to delay this process until such time as we had the opportunity to speak with Sarah a little bit more about all three plans. I think specifically the land use element. So that's, that's the, the planning board's decision to invite Sarah into this process a little bit as this is, this is, these are your documents. These are master plan documents. But we are prepared to, to sit with them and meet with them and hear their feedback between now and October if this board chooses, chooses to allow that.
First, Sarah, what we're going to do is we're going to leave this open idea in the end of the meeting. So if you can have a conversation with Sarah, like, still have a meeting.
That would be great, Mr. Chairman. We'd appreciate that. Thank you. So again, there will be no vote tonight on these master plan elements. And we'll come back to you. What we would request that we are, would be permitted to do is after we have a chance to meet with Sarah and hear their feedback, we then regroup with the master plan subcommittee to review the outcome of that discussion. And then when we're here in October, we would be presenting to you any changes that came of those two discussions with the full anticipation that a vote for adoption would happen at that October meeting. Great. Thank you. All right. So with that out of the way, I'll, I'll dive into the meat of what we're, what we're doing here tonight. So just as a reminder, this board did adopt a master plan reexamination report in the spring of 2023. And among many other recommendations of that reexamination report was the preparation of these three, of these three master plan elements. The land use element, which is a required element in the municipal land use law, the circulation plan element, and the community facilities plan element. Those are not technically required, but we do find next to the land use element, they are some of the most valuable master plan elements for, for a community. And so the borough agreed with those recommendations and, and we moved forward with preparing them. We, through the, the original scope of work we provided, included a, a public outreach process to occur during that master plan reexamination process. And, and then I should say again, some with stakeholder interviews during this current process. But during the reexamination process, we issued public surveys that went out. And we had hundreds of responses, actually. We were very pleased with how many people responded. So a lot of the response, all of the responses, I should say, from that public outreach process went directly into the determination of, of drafting the recommendations for this plan. So a lot of members, a lot of your residents, I believe it was, it was over 80% of the respondents were residents. The others were business owners or those who participated in, in the community, employment, et cetera. So their responses have been included into all of these plans. Broadly, these plans are to act as a roadmap for future policy decisions. They are not themselves policy. But your, the governing body, the council and mayor, will rely on these when making future policy decisions. This board, as well as the zoning board, will also rely on these when you have site plans in front of you and the zoning board has, uh, uh, use variances in front of them. These are the plans you want to go back to, to rely on to make sure that what is being proposed in front of you is consistent with the vision that the borough has determined to be appropriate for, for the borough moving forward. So quickly with where we are in the process. Again, the master plan was prepared as a guiding document. We are here tonight for a public hearing. This is again, not for adoption tonight, though, just for public discussion. And then in October, you will be voting on all three elements for adoption. Once they are adopted as elements of your master plan, that is when the various recommendations can begin to be implemented through your, through your governing body. So the first one is our land use plan element. Again, this one is required by the municipal land use law. And through it, there are a few required topics that we have to touch on. But generally, the purpose of the land use element is to review and evaluate development trends, land use trends, zoning trends within the borough, and establish a vision for future growth. So through this, we looked at various approvals from this board and the zoning board over the past several years. We looked at where the zoning ordinance and the actual zones might not be consistent with what's happening on the ground or with the types of applications you're seeing come before you. For example, with some zoning board applications, if we notice the same variances coming up over and over again, we consider whether the ordinance needs to be amended to maybe accommodate a different type of development in certain situations. So the various topics that are included in your land use element are history and demographics of, of the town, the most up-to-date census. We're lucky to be doing this after the 2020 census was released in, uh, it came out in 20, the data came out in 2022. So the timing for this was great. So it's very updated census data. Again, land use and zoning reviews, a fairly substantial environmental and sustainability review. One of the new requirements of a land use element as of 2021 is the climate change-related vulnerability assessment, assessment and an associated build-out analysis. So that include a very, included a very detailed analysis of where the borough is susceptible in terms of environmental threats and hazards. Clearly, as you all know, flooding is probably the number one environmental threat that, that is really present in the borough. And we, as you'll see, and we included some maps in this PowerPoint slide, but we've looked at where the flooding is occurring. Through that vulnerability assessment, we looked at where shelters, where potential shelters might be, if there was a big event that required evacuation to somewhere. We looked at evacuation routes. We looked at other various potential issues that aren't associated with flooding, like extreme heat, et cetera. So there was a lot of topics that went into that climate change vulnerability assessment. The build-out analysis looked at all of the existing development, all of the parcels that were, are technically available for development. And when I say available for development, those would be vacant parcels that don't have environmental constraints or easements or other, other issues that would prohibit it from being developed. And we then applied zoning standards and came up with a potential future build-out for both residential and non-residential. Additionally, we included various recommendations based on our public outreach, based on talking with the representatives in the borough, and of course, our own research. So just again, this is a very high-level summary of the recommendations. There's many, many pages in the actual element with land use and zoning recommendations. Generally, we recommend the preparation of an economic development plan. That came up a lot when we were doing research into what's happening on the ground and what the borough wants to see moving forward. And it wasn't, the land use element wasn't quite the appropriate place to do market analyses and market studies. So again, if the borough and the planning board are interested, that, we feel that would be a very beneficial addition to your, to your master plan. We looked at creating a flood hazard overlay zone as well as amendments to your existing environmental zones that would encourage further environmental preservation in areas that are very susceptible to, to flooding. One of the recommendations was to evaluate some of the parcels that have been, some of the neighborhoods that have been almost completely purchased by the Blue Acres program that went into effect right after Superstorm Sandy, where a lot of residents were, were bought out. And there's very few, there's very few development left there. So evaluating and evolving the zoning ordinance to incorporate what's really happening there now, post Sandy. Other design standards, we recommend updating for sustainability, green building, lighting, et cetera. We do recommend a full comprehensive overhaul of your zoning ordinance. The land use element provides very specific sections that would make sense to be updated, including definitions, signage, specific bulk standards that might need to be reevaluated. But generally, it's been, I think, since the 90s, since your ordinance had a comprehensive review and through discussions with your professionals, which I'm sorry, I did not call out Mike and Jake earlier. They were instrumental in helping us prepare these plans. We, we could not have done it without them. So you have, you're very lucky to have them here because they are incredibly knowledgeable. And they helped point us in the right direction for some of the ordinance standards that could use updates and be more modernization applied to them. We recommend removing defunct zones. There are some zones on your zoning map that just don't exist anymore. There are also a couple zones that have a handful of properties in them. It may be seven, and it really doesn't make sense to keep those zones anymore. So we recommend reevaluating and putting those properties under different zones that are more appropriate for what's happening on the ground. Finally, the zoning map, we recommended six specific changes, which are here, they're in the plan and highlighted. These are the, the six very specific parcels and sections of the borough that we recommend rezoning. And it's important to have something like this in your master plan because if the council determines that, yes, they agree, it makes sense for these parcels to be rezoned, we have all of the, all of the discussion and proof laid out in the master plan that they can refer to and they would like to, if they would like to rezone the parcels. So briefly, and we have, we have a key here. On the right-hand side, the map is highlighted with numbers. And on the left-hand side is our table with the associated numbers and what we're proposing to happen in those areas. So one being, there's existing, our seven properties along MacArthur and Weber. That is one of the prime locations that were subject to the Blue Acres buyout program between 2013 and 2022. There's very few residential properties left. So we recommend moving them over to the Open Space and Conservation Zone, the OCS Zone. We also do recommend a change to that Open Space and Conservation Zone that would allow any of the residents that are left who chose not to take advantage of the Blue Acres. We recommend an amendment to the zone that would allow them to stay, allow them to put an addition onto their house, allow them to renovate their house, get a new roof, but not permit new residential from coming into this, coming into this neighborhood. And most of these parcels, again, have already been purchased by Blue Acres. So it's, and there's not homeowners that would be, the, the goal is that there's not homeowners that would be negatively impacted by this. The ones that are there would still be allowed to remain. And everything else would be allowed to go into a more natural state to help with future flooding of this area because it has flooded before, it will definitely flood again. So this would preserve it for the future. Same with parcel two. I'm sorry, identification number two. This was another section of the borough that was significantly damaged by Superstorm Sandy. And a majority of these parcels have already been purchased by Blue Acres. So a similar recommendation is to help mitigate future flood damage and allow existing, allow the residents who are still there to remain, but allow the rest of the land to revert to a natural state that could help with flood mitigation. Also, within number two, there are a few parcels that we recommend, there's, I'm sorry, there's one parcel that we recommend moving. It is a split parcel. We recommend putting it wholly in the Saraval Economic Development Zone, which just puts that parcel into conformity so it's no longer split between two parcels. It would make any development they ever chose to do on their property much easier in front of the boards. The others, again, are very similar. Number three. These properties are existing in the R10. However, they are in a little pocket, surrounded by other properties in the light industrial and business service zone. Some of the parcels are already developed with business service. It would make more sense for what's on the ground and what it's surrounding to be more consistent. Identification number four. These are, this is part of the, uh, the effort to, what we are saying, eradicate the B2 zone. Again, this is a zone that I think all of the parcels that are listed in number four and five are the remaining parcels in the B2 zone. And it doesn't, the B2 zone just doesn't function anymore as it was originally intended to. So they would all be appropriate to be pushed into either the B3 or the B4 zone. And nobody would be pushed, like, well, our analysis says that really nobody should be pushed into non-conformity. It would actually make them more conforming with what's happening. And finally, parcel six, which is that large parcel on the map on the right that's, that's all covered in green. That's currently in the industrial zone. However, it's, it's not developed. It's, it's a green parcel. It would not make sense, it doesn't make sense to develop that as industrial. It does abut a fairly established residential neighborhood. So we are recommending to put it into the prime zone to continue keeping it more cap, to make it more compatible with that existing neighborhood to the east. And these are just some environmental maps to highlight. Again, all of this is in the plan. But you can see on the left, we have the general environmental constraints map with the 100-year floodplain being in pink. Obviously, the long, all of the, all of the waterfronts. Saraval has three huge frontages with water. Most of your municipal boundaries are waterways. So you can see how the floodway, the floodplain inundates into the, into the borough. The dotted areas are all of your wetlands. And there's some riparian zones that you can see highlighted in green there as well. This map also highlights the known contaminated sites within the borough, which are, of course, environmental, environmentally sensitive areas that you would want to consider if you were to get a development application in front of you that was one of these contaminated sites. Most of them, if not all of them, are under remediation or in the process of being remediated, but it's important to know where they are. The map on the right shows the Superstorm Sandy surge, which, these maps always, they're just so powerful, I think, to really see how all of that water came in. A lot of the water that came in from Sandy was not expected. Where it went, I should say, was not expected, based on FEMA models. So it's, even though that's 12 years ago now, it's really vital to see where that happened and to, to let that lead and, and help us plan for future land use and zoning initiatives. All right. So we're going to move on to the circulation plan element. And the purpose of this element is to provide guidance to the borough, to help facilitate the movement of goods, but also the movement of people within and around the borough with more modes of transportation than just, just automobiles. So what we reviewed as part of this, this app, this element is a bit, is a very big data-driven element. We reviewed freight routes, a lot of crash data, which is the map on the right, which I'll touch on in a second. Planned and proposed improvements by the borough, by the county, by the state, that all happened to take place within the borough's boundaries. As, we also provide at the end of this element a list of potential funding mechanisms that the borough could utilize to help with circulation and transit upgrades. As you can see in that map on the right-hand side, this is, we looked at crash data and it's no surprise that it, they really cluster along all of your major corridors. The, the county roads, of course, Route 9, the intersection there at 535 and 7, uh, 673, and along Route 9. Those were, as you can see, they're, they're the reddest of the dots. Those were the hotspots to happen there. Not surprising, the number of incidences reduced by almost 35% between 2020 and 2021 because nobody was driving. The number went up slightly after that, although it did not, I don't believe it hit the pre-COVID, at least as the most recent data has shown. It has not hit the pre-COVID numbers. But it's, it's a pretty telling map where you can see, see where all of the data is. And the plan itself goes into detail about the types of crashes those were. So the time of day they were, it breaks it down into morning time, afternoon, dusk, and nighttime. And then what crashes were involved, that involved pedestrians or cyclists. We have a whole separate map in the plan itself that actually shows the specific crashes that had pedestrians and cyclists. And these are incredibly useful maps for, for policy decisions in terms of where to focus potential funding and potential upgrades to the public safety routes. Again, high-level recommendations for this plan, for the circulation plan. We have a, a pretty large section around green infrastructure and resiliency. The borough has done so much in, from this perspective. So this is building on existing initiatives. Electric vehicle charging infrastructure. I know the police station, the police force built a lot of electric charging, but they don't have any fleet to use the electric charging stations, I believe. So, you know, talk, how to, how can we expand and, and help, help utilize that infrastructure? Also, emergency route signage. Again, especially we're talking about potential flooding, making sure that the signage on the roads is easy to see. Site triangles are clear. Brush is cleared away. So any emergency exit signage, any evacuation route signage is easily identifiable. Other tools especially would be appropriate to implement in some of the redevelopment areas that are going to be creating new roadway systems and new street grids would be to encourage the use of rain gardens, which again, the green infrastructure is already required through DEP Stormwater Management Rules for Site Plan. But when you have redevelopment projects coming in with, with new streets and new right-of-ways and getting them to build rain gardens into those right-of-ways already would, would be a huge help just right there before we even get to the development applications. Same with, we did, there's a big focus on pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. That was a really big point of feedback from the public about the safety for pedestrians and cyclists. And, and not just some are for them, for bicyclists to ride, but also the sidewalk network throughout the, the borough. There are some neighborhoods that have a fantastic sidewalk network[1346.75] and they're safe, great crosswalks. There are others, especially the older ones, that just, they were built without them, and they're very difficult to upgrade, to include them, given where existing utilities are, or where the width of the right-of-way. So we have a proposal in here to, as the planning board and the zoning board, to look at your applications as they come in and take some of those older neighborhoods on a site-by-site basis and see where and how we could help fill in the gaps of some of those sidewalks. Especially for the zoning board, when there's a use variance, that would be something, a very critical tool that they could request a developer to implement if they were to grant a use variance. And generally, street and neighborhood design, cross-access between the neighborhoods, implementing complete streets where appropriate to ensure that it's safe for everybody to travel. And of course, infrastructure upgrades to make sure that the roads are being kept up and being maintained for the next era of cars, whether that be electric vehicles, whether that be autonomous vehicles, anything that's going to happen, keeping the streets safe and secure. And here, just again, a few highlight maps from the plan. The one on the left shows the public transportation routes that go through Saraville. There's quite a few bus lanes that go through here. And even though you all don't have a train station specifically within your borders, the South Amboy train station is very close to a lot of sections of the borough. And not to mention, they're very terminal. And South Amboy opened up last year as a commuter route to North Jersey or to the city. So those are very viable options for borough commuters. Or just anybody wanting to take a train ride to Manhattan or down to the shore. The one on the right shows the specific major roadway networks within the borough. Again, the big county roads, of course, the Garden State Parkway, which I drive almost every day through here. So it's, don't have to tell you that exists. But it does highlight where you see the major routes coming in and out of the town. And last but not least, is our community facilities plan element. The purpose of this is to inventory all of the borough's community facilities, and that includes your fire, your police, your DPW, your library, your schools, any of those parks and rec, any of those other facilities that provide a community service. Through this plan, we, and specifically Hannah, interacted with all of your department heads or representative from all of these departments, from the police department, from the fire department, OEM, the senior community. Everybody got a say, and everybody responded. We sent them questionnaires. I believe Hannah spoke to a few of them on the phone also. So we made sure that all of their input was put into this plan. So in the plan, when we talk about the challenges that are facing these departments, those come straight from either the chiefs, the department heads, an administrator, someone in charge of those departments. So we were getting direct feedback from them about what they would like to see for the future. So a lot of these recommendations revolve additional studies that might need to happen to determine where facilities and equipment really could feasibly be updated. For example, a new community center for the seniors. We've heard that the space could, in the future, evolve to meet the needs of the seniors. Same with the police force. They, again, they have the electric vehicle chargers, but they do not have the electric vehicle fleet. So how are there ways to help them reach that goal? And again, we do provide funding opportunities at the end of this plan. Flood resiliency, we have on the right-hand side of this slide our community facilities associated with the Sandy Superstorm Surge. So you can see what's near or adjacent, or in some instances, in the surge boundary. There are quite a few parks that are close to or within the boundary. So it might be worth reviewing these parks to see what their capacity is for absorbing extra stormwater. We've seen very successful implementations of underground stormwater management in parks, where you really don't even know that they're happening. And it can be a first line of defense for these major storms before they get to the neighborhoods. So providing the data there for future review. And we do provide some additional recommendations associated with general options that could be offered to residents. There was a thought of doing a youth government career program where youths could be teamed up with department heads or officials from the borough here, almost like a shadowing program to help get them interested in municipal careers. We know that the police force has had a hard time recruiting new officers. So again, somehow to get younger people involved, to let them know what's out there. Safety trainings, historic preservation. We've heard that there's been some issues maintaining some of the borough's historic assets. So maybe initiating a committee to evaluate whether or not there are certain assets that are worth preserving in the borough. And of course, making sure that all the facilities are well-equipped for future growth. I don't think I have to tell anybody here that Saraville does continue to grow. You have more and more developments being built. People want to live here, and they're moving into all of those new houses that are, and townhouses that are being built. So keeping on track and updated with how the facilities might need to evolve and grow to support your growing population. And again, here's a few resource identification maps. We have all of the schools plotted on the map on the left and all of the municipal facilities on the right. Saraville is unique where you don't, I mean, of course, fire stations are always distributed throughout a community, but you have municipal offices in many different parts of the town. So this map is able to lay them out pretty well, I think. And that is all I have for you for tonight. As the, even though, even though I do feel like I talked at you a lot, the Land Use Element alone is 80 pages, so I didn't want to get too far into the weeds of that. Yeah, let me turn that off. But I do feel we were able to get you a broad overview. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have before moving on tonight. I don't remember.
I don't. Yes, so I don't believe that's addressed in our circulation element. I think in conversations with the professionals, we decided to not address that right now, just due to some feasibility concerns. But, yeah, that doesn't mean that it's not.
I think, Hannah, I think you do have it referenced in there, the fact that it's been designed, certain sections, and that there's funding issues that are currently being reviewed. So it is, it is referenced in the documents. Certain sections have already been designed and permitted, but there are funding issues that have prevented it from being constructed. Since the mid-'80s, it's been in the master plan, yes. But it is referenced in this document, yeah. Well, feasible is the fact that it's been designed and we've got permits for it. The problem is funding. The first phase of the project takes it from River Road to Kimball Drive East. That's the first phase. And you've already got sections that have been constructed over by Neptune Power Plant, by Sheffield Town. The intention was to piece those sections together to create basically half of the roadway. So you'd have a bypass, you'd be able to get from Main Street all the way to Kimball East. Problem is, the cost of that project is $20 million. So the borough, years ago, had approximately $10 million, but it never received it because of the timeframe. So I think you have $2 million in the bank. So you have $2 million out of 20 that you need to be able to construct the project. So the borough has been reviewing alternate funding. They've been, that's something that the administrators over the years have been looking at, grant money to try to assist. But that's where it stands at the present time, is you have that first phase designed and permitted. You just don't have the funding to build it. It was, it was going to provide a secondary point of access. So rather than everybody on the north side of Main Street having only one access to Main Street, there'd be a second way that you can go through and get out of development. So not everybody's coming to Main Street. You had two different directions that you'd be able to travel in. So conceptually, it makes a lot of sense. The problem now is the funding. Well, there were a lot of issues with getting the permits for it. And the other thought was, if you have development of adjacent parcels, you'd have that developer build a piece of the roadway. That's how you got what you have now. Neptune built it, Sheffield Town built it. So that's still an option as well.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Currently, when an application comes before our board, we can't consider the general impact of that development application on the area, specifically traffic. Do we have the ability to designate certain areas in our town as if there's going to be a new development application, then we can consider the off-site impacts such as traffic when we're determining that application?
So it's tricky, because you guys are the planning board. So it means everything that comes before you is a permitted use. I believe your ordinance, as most, still require those permitted uses for the major site plans to provide a traffic study. You can still consider it, and you should consider it, what the traffic is going to be there. And I'll defer to your council for additional legal advice. But for, because everything is permitted, the thought is that when the council zoned this use as permitted, they contemplated the traffic into the zoning. Now, whether or not you can consider, I would say you can still consider what the impact is. I would, I'm going to have to watch what I'm saying in terms of what you can do with that, but.
Yeah, I mean, jumping, you can always consider factors in making your decision. You cannot deny an application based upon off-site traffic conditions. So that's the only thing that really is affecting this application, is you're going to create so much traffic, and there's always have a traffic issue in that, these surrounding roads. This state, and it's nothing you can do here. It's state law, state case law that's stated. You cannot deny an application based upon those factors. But that doesn't mean if there's other factors, and it's, overall, the site doesn't work as being proposed, well, then that's a different story. But just that alone isn't, you can't deny.
Nothing we can do to designate certain problem areas as, okay. Well, not that we're full, that this is, traffic is a major problem in this area. And we're going to consider that in the application, not just the ingress and egress, getting into the proposed site, but how it's going to impact this site, this area overall.
The only way you really can do that, at least the way I'm thinking right now, would be by changing the uses. So if you changed, if you knew that you can't, we can't handle any more retail, the traffic from in and out of retail through this area, then you would amend your master plan and recommend that the council adopt, you know, zoning ordinances that would change the permitted uses and that wouldn't let out type retailers, retail or high-traffic-producing type uses. Or you may even go to the full extent to say, this is all going to be open space now. Or, you know, public facilities, you know, parks and so forth. But that's really the only way, under current real law, that you can really get that direct and affect the traffic. But otherwise, if it is, as she was saying, if it is a permitted use, then that's assuming that you've taken into the traffic. Now, how that site is designed and how the traffic comes in and out, that is 100% within this board's purview. And you can consider that and actually take that directly into effect as to how that works. But how it will affect the corner, you know, the traffic at the corner or the intersection down the street, that you can't. At least you can't deny an application.
It is the case, you do have a lot of county roads that go through here. So anybody who's coming in for an application on one of those county roads has to go to the county to get approval. Most county roads, and I forget if all of Saraville's are like this, but they have built-in right-of-way widening as a part of it. So an applicant who comes in would have to dedicate a certain part of their roadway. And then eventually, after the county has accumulated so many frontages, they can widen or do what they need to do within that. So there's other levels that are looking at it. And I would say to council's point is, if the mayor and council want to consider amending different uses, I think the crash data and maps that we have in this plan are pretty telling and could be the subject for perhaps Jay's office to do a further review of what might be more appropriate in that area. Because clearly, those are some of the big problem areas, of course. So using those as the tool to help devise another, another method to address it in the future.
Was that analyzed so that we could evaluate if uses should be prohibited in certain areas because it generates too much traffic? Because traffic is the predominant problem that I see. And I think even when our mayor was sworn in, he said that the traffic was the number one issue. So it's a big problem in Saraville. And I want to make sure that we're trying to do everything we can on this reevaluation to address that big problem.
Yeah, and you're certainly not the only ones. I mean, traffic is a problem. And I think anecdotally, I think it's actually gotten worse since COVID, for whatever reason. So our scope is not to do traffic counts. That would be a traffic engineer's job to really hone in. But what I would say is, our plan lays the groundwork for that and gives the, highlights the problem areas of where an additional traffic study might be worth, might be worth pursuing on behalf of the borough. I have seen some towns do kind of some traffic-wide, town-wide traffic studies to try and further identify the specific corridors. And then you go from there a step further, and then you reevaluate what's happening along that corridor. So I think we've provided the tools. We aren't equipped to do traffic studies, though. That really would be an engineer's job, yeah.
And I just want to thank, the presentation you had was very good, especially the steps in the master plan process to show where we're at currently. Are you involved in every step, or at some point, do you fall away? Are you involved in preparing the changes to the zoning ordinance, or?
So we'll see this through the adoption of the plan in October. I believe the borough has another town planner on staff, and I know Mike is certainly involved here, who would help implement those in the future.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? At the end of your presentations?
So that's the end. I would say that we really appreciate you hearing us tonight and letting us present. And as we said at the beginning of this hearing, we, with your blessing, are going to go speak. As the chairman laid out at the beginning of this hearing, we're going to go speak to Sarah and hear what they have to say before we reconvene with your master plan subcommittee, and then be back in October.
I think you need to pick a specific date that you're going to carry this hearing to. At the present time, October 2nd and the 16th are your meetings. You don't have any applications scheduled, Co. It could either be the 2nd or the 16th, I guess, depending upon McKinley, your schedule.
I believe, you just let me check, I think either one is good. Yes, either one of those would be totally good with us.
Do you have any pleasure? October 2nd, then?
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just for a public announcement, as we normally do with the public hearings on applications, the same holds true with this public hearing. So anyone viewing this or here in the audience that wants to continue participating in this public hearing, it is now going to be carried to the October 2nd board meeting with no further notice being provided.
Thank you, everybody.
And after you talk to Sarah, we'll get the committee back together, go through Beth. We'll set that up.
Thank you, Beth, you've been very helpful. I should have called you out earlier, we couldn't have done this without you either.
No problem.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep, so we have old business, new business, and administrative matters. Our next meeting is August 21st. Jay?
Chairman, you have two applications scheduled for your meeting. There's a minor subdivision on Gordon Pond Avenue. And you also have the site plan for the development of the landfill on Dernville Road. Here in fall, that this year, you have been the development plan. A lot of folks stood where housing and testing terms of the public, two applications.
21st.
Anything else?
To make a motion?
Old business? To the public?
Yes.
Motion to the public?
Motion for the public?
Second? Your second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anybody from the public like to speak? Not hold your peace? Need a motion to close the public?
Make a motion to close to the public?
Get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.